Yeah. How many did you get to pass them on?
Bigger, alright.
Unless I sign off my soccer. Anyways, I would like to open the Northborough Southborough Regional School Committee meeting, Wednesday, November 20th, 2019 at 7:03. The first action of minutes is to approve the meeting, the open meeting of October 16th. Paul?
So I'd move that we approve the minutes of the open meeting of October 16th, 2019, as well as the executive session minutes of October 16th, 2019?
And to retain those?
And to retain those.
I would second that.
So first by Paul, seconded by Dan. Any questions, conversation? All those in favor? All opposed? That passes. Do I have to do an exec, do I have to do a roll call for executive or not? Alright, there is no education policy at this time and the next business in order is the Student Support Service presentation.
We'd like to welcome Felicia Ruttigliano, who will give an update on all the great things that are happening in Student Support Services.
Good evening, how are you? Before I get started with my presentation, I have slides and fun pictures and information about student support, I would like to give our young people a chance to showcase some of their interesting talents and interesting words too about their paths that they're taking after they leave here. Because of their busy schedules and I've got one young man that's working in the show tonight, I would like to start, yes, thank you, I would like to start with our Unified Singers who are going to perform a beautiful song for you.
Yes.
And I would like to thank Lori Diamond, our parent volunteer, for helping us out.
Unified Singing Club is the first and only non-competitive singing club here at Algonquin. Our focus is collaboration, kindness, and true celebration of everyone's unique gifts. Founded by Emily Carrion.
You hit the sad eyes. Don't be discouraged, oh I realize. It's hard to take courage in a world full of people. You can lose sight of it all, the darkness inside you can make you feel so small. I see your true colors shining through. I see your true colors, that's why I love you. So don't be afraid to let them show your true colors. True colors are beautiful like a rainbow. Show me you're smiling. Don't be unhappy, can't remember when. I last saw you laughing. If this world makes you crazy and you've taken all you came there, just call me up 'cause I will always be there. And I see your true colors shining through. I see your true colors, that's why I love you. So don't be afraid to let them show your true colors. True colors, true colors, true colors, true colors, true colors, true colors, true colors.
Unified Singers, yeah! Thank you, thank you very much Unified Singers. Takes a lot of courage to get up in front of a bunch of people. And they do that, they do that almost weekly for the Unified Basketball Games, they've been performing and singing the National Anthem, so I'll let them pack up and go if they need to, if that's alright with you. In the meanwhile, I do have those two young men who are gonna come up and speak to you. I would like to invite up first Jacob.
Got my notes here. Hi, everyone, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Jacob and I'm a senior here at Algonquin. Instructional Support Services have helped me since kindergarten. When I was two and a half, I fell from a third-story window onto the concrete below me resulting in a traumatic brain injury. When I came to Algonquin, I was very uncertain about myself and I was very worried about how the transition would affect me, both socially and emotionally. But thanks to the support services here, the transition went smoother than I anticipated it. I made sure my teachers knew of my situation and so they'd be understanding if I had an off day. Being on an IP was, has been huge for me. I'm able to get help when I need it, whether it be academic planning or math, if I do my math homework, but that's for a different day. Now, near the middle of my senior year, I've learned how to get work done and a timely manner, how to advocate with my teachers and be a bright light for those who need one. In addition, it was hard for me to make long-lasting friends throughout my time in middle school, so I was worried that the hardship would carry me into high school. I made a few friends freshman year, but none that I really felt would carry on, nobody that I really connected to. I helped backstage with the musical in the fall of my sophomore year and that was a huge eye-opener for me as far as like, why didn't I do this last year? I made many friends almost immediately and most of these were relationships that I felt could carry on. I'm at it again this year. By the way, if you're looking for something to do, we open tomorrow night here in the theater at 7:00 PM or Friday and Saturday at the same time. Without these supports, I know I wouldn't be as confident, both socially and emotionally, as I am today. I'm looking forward to going to college next fall, but for now, I'm off to dress rehearsal. So thank you all, thank you all for listening and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And now I have Dakota, who is taking a very different path, is gonna come up and speak to you.
Hello, my name is Dakota Drew and I'm currently a senior at Algonquin. I've been in the Northborough school system since I was in the first grade. ISS has helped me learn to self-advocate for myself in situations where I used to rely on others to advocate for me. I am better able to speak up for myself and ask for assistance when I need it, if it's extra help or if I need extra time. Academic supports such as modified assessments, reference sheets, and extra time to review have helped me to compensate for my learning difficulties. These slight changes to my work and such through the years have helped me so much and made my high school experience so much easier. My path to post-secondary has always been the same for me. My goal was always to join the Armed Services. I have already started talking to recruiters and training for my services in the near future, if you couldn't already tell. Thank you very much.
Alright, and one of the other things I love about these two young men, and this is the case with a lot of our students, they're also very helpful to our other students. Dakota just spoke on Friday at our Veterans Assembly and shared his experience and his passion and his desire to go into the Armed Services. And Jacob has helped us multiple times with tours of the building for incoming eighth graders, so he's been a wonderful help. They give back to their community for sure. Now, I've just gotta figure out how to set my laptop up so that I can show my presentation to you. Thank you. Alright, so as you know, I'm Felicia Ruttigliano and I am the Department Coach, they call me, for Instructional Student Support Department. I've enjoyed my time working in this department. I've been here for about 14 years now. This is just a nice picture of some of our staff, not all of our staff. We have a very large department, in fact, I believe we're the largest department in the building, consisting of 15 teachers, around 28 ESPs, and around 20 specialized service providers. That includes a lot of people. I listed a few of them up there for you, our OTs, PT, school adjustment counselors, school psychologists, tutors, reading specialists, transition coordinator, etc. This is just a shot of the continuum of the different types of supports that we offer here at Algonquin and it includes the different programs that we have, some of which fall under specifically special education, but others also under general education such as our access program and our focus studies, our English Language Development Program. And now to the fun part, the pictures of the kids. One of the things that we're very proud that we're continuing to have here at Algonquin is our co-teaching pairs. We have eight co-teaching pairs this year and those spread across, not just the special education support teachers, but also our ELD teachers are joining Gen Ed teachers and helping students to access the curriculum better. So here at Algonquin, it's all about making connections. Of course, academics come first and we are certainly helping our students with their academics, but we are very excited that we can also help the entire child to develop. So making those connections inside and outside of our community is very important for all of our students. Some of the ways that this is happening here at Algonquin is through not only just the Unified Singing Program, but also our Unified Sports Programs. We have students that are in regular athletics as well, but Unified Basketball and Unified Track are supported by staff and by peers. Here are some pictures of different activities around the school during the day and outside of the school. Our CAP program students recently visited the Framingham State Science and Space Museum that they have there. Our DECA Life Skills students are in the throes of planning for their competitions this coming year. And of course, we have some Unified Track pictures there and some Best Buddies. Our Best Buddies Program is wonderful and very supportive. And this is really special, I saved it for last because this is a new partnership. We have many partnerships, by the way. We have Thrive that comes after school and helps kids with different activities that they may wanna participate in, also teaching them some soft skills for jobs. But we recently were identified as a school community with a strong Best Buddies Program that could be, play a part in a grant that was developed by MAFRE, I think is how you say it. MAFRE put together a grant and they've started partnering with the Best Buddies Jobs Program. And one of their representatives came to our school and worked with one of our post-grads seen here and was able to land her a position as an intern with the Worcester Railers. So you can see her there, she's enjoying very much being involved in this program. This is just one of the ways that we are trying to partner with the community, the larger and broader community, to try and help our students develop the skills so that they can take a path to beyond just choosing from college or the Armed Services. And some of the other programs that we have, some of the other partnerships that we have that I haven't mentioned yet is Aspire. They help some of our students with transitions and they get them internships too and help them through pre-employment job skills. We're also partnering with FSU, as I mentioned earlier, and Clark University also is partnering with some of our CAP kids. One thing that I'm really proud of, because it shows that we really do care and that our kids feel like this is their home, away from home, and that they have the support that they need. We have six of our ESPs this year are graduates of Algonquin and four of those are students with disabilities who went through our programs and two of them are actually going back to school now to be teachers. I think that's wonderful. That's all I have for you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer anything. Yes?
So I thank you for that, that was one of the most uplifting
Oh, good!
Absolutely. Songs I've ever had the pleasure of seeing and hearing. So thank you for what you're doing on behalf of these students. Do you see the resources that you need? We, we, there's so much focus on, you know, how many AP classes can we offer? How many, you know, all of this, you know, for our most exceptional learners and, you know, I wanna know, are we doing, do you have everything that you need, you know, for the students that you're supporting who have just demonstrated to us some amazing courage tonight?
Right, right. Thank you for asking that question, it's a really good question. I do believe that we get the resources that we need. I feel very fortunate, actually, I, like I said, I've been here for 14 years and I have many friends that work in other districts and work in special education. And as you know, special education, if we need something, we're obligated by law to provide that for the student. But I feel so fortunate to work here at Algonquin and I think that our resources are just incredible and we're very, very lucky. The one thing that I would say, and I would say it not just to this group, I would say it to all of the parents and the entire community, any connections that you can help us to make to gain more internships, to talk to employers out there that might be willing to talk to us and partner with us to try and get some job skills and some pre-employment training for our students, I would, I would love to talk to them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you talk a little more about the co-teaching pairs and how that works?
Yes, yes, absolutely. In the spring, we meet, SBLT meets together and we talk about which courses we anticipate might needing support, looking at the eighth graders who are transitioning in, and also looking at our MCAS scores, looking at other data that might indicate which classes might need to be supported. And then we do reach out to our teachers, our special education teachers and ask, you know, who would be interested in maybe continuing with that pair that they're already in? Or would they like to join a different classroom or would they be willing to join a different classroom? We went through, many of us went through extensive training when Tom Mead was here for co-teaching and we share that experience with each other, with new people who might want to be part of a co-taught team. But the pairs are a Gen Ed teacher and a special ed teacher or an ELD teacher.
What is ELD?
ELD is the English Language Development Teachers. So, and it just, it helps to differentiate the learning and provide support to all the students in the classroom. The kids usually love it.
Thank you.
Sure, yes.
I've gone to the concert last year for the Unified Singing Choir and I think you were there too, were you not?
My daughter was in it at the time, yes.
Yeah, and, and I just loved it and I understood that Lori Diamond is a volunteer?
She is.
And I'm wondering what it would take to reimburse her for her time and effort because I have a lot of respect and for that and just curious.
Yeah, it's a good question. It would be a nice thing to do even just to acknowledge, you know, even if it was a bouquet of flowers or something. We have been, I, I should've shared this item, I did write a grant for the corridor nine and I won it. I just found out the other day that I won the grant. Of course, we have to follow the specifics, so I can't necessarily, you know, ask for things like that for reimbursement or to try and get a stipend or anything. But I was able to get 10 percussion instruments, small percussion instruments, so that we could try and increase our numbers of students because some of our stu, we've had non-verbal students in the past, we actually do have a non-verbal student now who is in it, but she was at dance class, so she couldn't join us tonight. And also, there are kids that don't have a voice and may not feel like they can really sing, but they can certainly participate in our joy of music.
Wonderful, and there are several school committee members that are musicians, I'm sure we would all be more than happy to participate in, in adding to the choir.
Okay, we'd love it, come and join us.
We, we all, right?
We practice every Tuesday, for the most part, after school from two to three and the music department's been wonderful and lending us borrow anything that they have and we try to perform before the Christmas show and other times too. And last year, they, we were included in the POPS. I think that might be what you're talking about, right? Was the, what is it called? What's the spring show? Yeah, it is POPS, right, the POPS performance. They did a wonderful job and that was very inclusive because even some of our singers joined with the more typical kids and singers and they performed together, so it was, it was a wonderful thing, so.
Please give our thanks to the girls who are in the a cappella choir, to the gentleman who is going to be going into the services, Armed Services, and also the theatrical student who is in the mania. I think it's wonderful, it's wonderful, and it's wonderful for us as school committee members to see the showcasing of their talents. I don't know if I could've gotten up before a school committee when I was in high school and just sing and they did a wonderful job, they did absolute wonderful, they sounded as good as a college applicant.
Very well rehearsed.
Very, very rehearsed and just with what Kathleen was saying, you know, being in music myself, but just, just in high school, I know how important and even studies that come out, as Kathleen has said, music, how well it prepares a student for any other type of education and even life skills, okay? How to manage your time, how to perform grace and all that. So I think all of this is wonderful that you're doing and please give our thanks and especially my thanks to the students when you see them tomorrow and also to the parents for their support and thanks to all the staff, that's wonderful.
I certainly will, thank you so much.
Sure, next on the agenda, we have Jennifer Suker, who is Director of English Language Education and she will be providing us with an update of English Language Education Program.
Thank you, thank you so much for inviting me here tonight. I wanna thank you for this opportunity to share information about our English Language Education Program at Algonquin. Our state's definition of an English learner is a student whose first language is not English and who is not currently able to perform ordinary classroom work in English. Second, I wanted to state that you might hear me use several acronyms this evening as this field in particular is one of them. You might hear me refer to an English learner simply as an L and a former English learner as a FEL. You might also hear me say SEI, which stands for Sheltered English Immersion. This is the type of instruction that teaches academic content to English learners. There are others too and I will do my best at finding them as I go along. All students exposed to another language are required to be screened for English language proficiency to ensure that the students have the level of academic English needed to be successful in our classrooms. If a student qualifies as an English learner, the student requires specialized programming. The program that we have in place in all three of our districts The program that we have in place in all three of our districts is called Structured English Immersion, which comprises two parts. English Language Development, which is more commonly known as ESL or English as a Second Language, and also structured content instruction. This means the student must receive English Language Development or ESL taught by a licensed ESL teacher and be placed in SEI classrooms, which are classrooms where the teacher has an SEI endorsement and instruction is scaffolded according to the language proficiency of the student. English learners are definitely not a homogenous group and we do not have a fixed profile. There are many, many factors that we take into consideration when working with our students. And we learn about these factors by spending time talking to each family or guardian upon registering their child. From this family interview, we garnered information about their child's educational background, home language and recent languages, consistency in school, mobility, if they come from urban or rural settings, possible trauma, individual factors that may impact learning, learning challenges and strengths, possible or diagnosed disabilities, and their child's post-secondary goals when applicable. Tonight, we are going to look at data captured in October of our current school year. There are three graphs with information to share tonight. The first graph is the regional grades nine through 12 English learner and former English learner population trend analysis. This graph shows our growth since 2004, when we started with just four English learners. Please note that data between 2005 and 2008 are skipped so that more recent data could be added to this graph. The numbers above the darker green bars indicate the number of students who are English learners in the program every year. The numbers above the lighter green bars indicate the number of students reclassified or exited from the program and who need to be monitored for four years to ensure continued growth in their learning. This is the fourth time that we have captured four years of reclassified students since the new regulation to go for monitoring FELs for two years to four years was issued in 2016. Taking a look at both English learners and former English learners gives a more complete picture of the number of students in the district being instructed as well as actively monitored by the English Language Development Teachers. This year, there are 21 English learners and 47 former English learners, totaling 68 students. As of October 26th, eight students in grades nine through 12 have been tested for their English language proficiency with six of those students qualifying as English learners. The number of students tested is not reflected on this graph, but it's important to know this because by law, every student exposed to another language needs to be screened for English language proficiency. And intake and assessment take well over two hours per student. The second page shows the whole languages of our English learners and former English learners at Algonquin. This year, Portuguese continues to be the predominant language, followed by Spanish, Arabic, French, Hindi, Russian, Thai, Vietnamese, Chinese, Haitian, Creole, Hebrew, Armenian, Hungarian, Japanese, Korean, Luganda, Malay, Marathi, Polish, and Tamil. If a family cannot read English, the district is required by law to translate school documents and reports. The third graph is an analysis of the language proficiency levels of our students in grades nine through 12. Along the horizontal axis are the five levels of language proficiency. Entering, which is also called Level 1, Emerging Level 2, Low Developing, and High Developing 3, Expanding Level 4, and Bridging Level 5. If you look at the first bar, you can see that 19.05% of our Ls are at the Entering Level, the Level 1. And 4.76% of the Ls are at Level 2. 9.52% are at the Low Developing 3. 28.5% approximately are at the Expanding Level. A little over 38% at the Bridging Level. Below each level is the actual number of students. And below that is the amount of hours of ESL instruction, instruction recommended by the Department of Development through their education. These data are important in order to understand the complexity of scheduling and ELD instruction as well as the ESL staff needed to instruct these students. For example, about one-third of our students are in Levels 1, 2, and Low 3. They need at least 90 minutes of direct instruction per day. It is challenging for students who are beginning to learn English to function in a high school classroom. And it is crucial to provide the intensity and quality of ELD instruction our students in order to make effective progress in their acquisition of English. Additionally, students at Levels High 3, 4, and 5, which comprise the remaining two-thirds of the students, continue to require direct instruction because the academic demands are more intense. Realizing the demands on students, we have an after-school program for our high school Ls offered monthly. As I also talked about in September, we have a summer program this past summer with a focus on coding. I mentioned earlier that the programming for English learners is Structured English Immersion, SEI. The RETAIL Initiative, which stands for Rethinking Equity in Teaching English Language Learners, is a federal mandate and in Massachusetts. It started in 2013 for Northborough and Southborough. And the SEI endorsement is a requirement for all core academic teachers. This includes teachers of English, math, science, civics and government, economics, history and geography, special education and career vocational, as well as principals, assistant principals, and directors who supervise these teachers. The SEI course is designed to train teachers to work with Ls for Levels 3 and up, not Levels 1 and 2. And yet the same graduation expectations hold for all students. This is a very important initiative, but it does not address our immediate situation to provide everything needed for our students at the foundational level. We focus on every angle of education for all of our students, which includes special education. Over the years, we have done a lot of work in understanding second language acquisition and learning disabilities. Ls in Massachusetts are tested doubly every school year. They take a test called the ACCESS for Ls, another acronym, which stands for Assessing Comprehension and Communication in English State-to-State for English Language Learners. And it is a state that is put out by a company called WIDA, World Class Instructional Design and Assessment. And our Ls, of course, also have to take MCAS as well. The ACCESS for Ls assesses a student's proficiency level in the four domains of language, reading, writing, speaking, and listening. Our Ls in grades nine through 12 test online, with exceptions being made for Ls who are in their first year at US schools and for those students whose IEP stipulate favor-based testing. The ELD teachers in our district are trained annually to administer these tests. As far as family outreach, we continue to have strong homeschool relationships with our families who participate in their children's education. We've argued in the family interviews that we conduct as part of the intake process to get to know each student well. We also disseminate information to the parents and guardians of our Ls. For adults interested in learning English, we are able to recommend some ESL classes. The Northborough Public Library is continuing to offer English Conversation Circles, which is open to Northborough residents and beyond. We also let our families know about adult ESL classes through Asabat After Dark as well as Quincy Memorial Community College in Worcester and in the living satellite of Marlboro. Last spring, we held our third annual International Night at Algonquin with over 300 guests. We brought together our families from Northborough and Southborough at this wonderful event. This year's, this school year's International Night will be held on May 1st again in the Algonquin cafeteria. Our schools are also bringing families together at the school level to get to know one another as we continue on our journey in becoming more culturally proficient. Earlier this month, Algonquin's ELD teachers partnered with the Guidance Department in instructional technology to host an information session, instructing parents and guardians on how to use iPass and Canvas and providing more information on the four-year plan at Algonquin as well as the role of the guidance counselor. Parents had an opportunity to meet their child's guidance counselor and begin to build those relationships. In general, there's wonderful collaboration and teamwork within all fields and departments in our district to ensure that our students are receiving an outstanding education. And thank you again for this opportunity to provide you with this update.
I just have one question. I'm glad to see, and I think you told us also at Northborough, how you disseminate the information to the parents of these students. And a question just came into my mind. How do we communicate if there is a district-wide one call that goes out to these parents that may not, you know, speak English or understand it? How do we make sure that they're getting that pertinent information that is very time-sensitive?
So with time-sensitive information, we, we do our, get our best to get it immediately from central office and hand it out to our translators. We could also have, if it's very time-sensitive, we can have interpreters call the families as well.
Does, does one call translate?
It does. One call also has a feature where it can translate messages.
Okay. Which is very important because you're saying that, you know, making those home visits would be very important to make sure that you have the avenues and they are aware that it would be translated in their language. So, thank you very much for your report.
Good.
Just a quick question on the first charts you gave us, the English learners versus the former English learners. Do the former English learners require resources and time from, from your department? Or is that just a kind of a record-keeping track of your successes?
A little bit of both, definitely the record-keeping track. I would say there's, it's definitely sort of a consultant model where the ELD teacher will consult with the SEI teachers or those current teachers who have these students in their classes. And it does happen on occasion where a student has been reclassified and there are some concerns about the student's English and the ELD teacher has been used to it if necessary or again, at least so as a consultant or coach to.
The reason why I'm asking, you know, in, in the 16, 17 school year, between the two, you had 50 students involved. And then all of a sudden, it leaped up to 71 and then got even higher the year after. And, you know, kind of a, if, if it mattered, I mean, it looked like a 40% kind of increase in demand. But it doesn't, it seems like as long as the EL numbers are the ones that we should really be kind of more focused on here as we, as we try and understand what goes on there. Okay, good. Thanks. You're filling big shoes. You're doing a good job. We appreciate it.
Just a couple of questions. So, are you able to plan, I mean, based, are all the students coming, you know, from the middle school level? Are you able to plan or are there students moving in that you're not able to plan for?
Both.
Yeah.
We see answers to the question. So we have a number of students who come directly from abroad. And then we have students who are transferring from other districts, either in the state or outside of the state, as well as students coming up from the middle schools. So we can plan to an extent.
To an extent.
To an extent, yes.
Completely understand that challenge. And so then, do you have enough staffing? Do you have enough support for all, because seven, seven students at 90 minutes a day is quite a bit. And then, and if you didn't plan for it, it's even more challenging.
We do. Yes, we do.
Yeah. Okay, good. The other question would be, are you finding, I know there's a lot of challenges around students qualifying or going through the special ed process that may also be receiving EL services. Is, is that been a challenging situation too? Or, or have you been able to kind of separate those issues out?
It can be. It's always important to have the ELD teacher or someone like myself at the table just to be a part of those conversations because we're looking at it through, you know, the ESL lens.
Yeah.
And of course, a person can have a disability coming from any language background. But we are able to try out things with students in terms of interventions and have many people observe them. That's definitely not our go-to when we have other concerns.
Yeah, good. I know the state, I know it's a, it's a concern across the state and the state is looking at it quite a bit because.
Like over-identifying.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, students are very much on the same wavelength.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, our next agenda is a concussion update.
What I wanted to start off with is what we originally talked about a couple of months back in regards to impact testing. I had a brief meeting with Superintendent Martino in regards to where we stand with the impact testing. The number that was reported that was going into this year is we stand at, still at six. And I think, how are we going to expand that is the most important question. So, I did a little bit of research in regards to other schools who offer impact testing throughout the district. Some of our local mid-watch schools who do offer it. There are a couple of schools that do not offer it. There are a couple of schools that offer it that's mandatory. And there's also schools that don't do it that's mandatory, but also involve more of a lab-type situation with our coaches. And I thought that that was a very good idea and a concept that I would like to try to implement. And we're going to try to, again, prevent, I mean, not prevent, but continue to provide our coaches with the necessary tools made available. We, we make sure that we, they're aware at our sports meetings, three times a year. This time, we had a little bit of a change in our last recent winter sports meeting where we, I individually brought the paperwork to the coaches to make sure that every single parent was able to receive that information along with working and having, the kids have an opportunity to take it with their primary care. And I think one thing that we're going to continue to work at is at our coaches' meeting in the winter and at our coaches' meeting in the fall, we're going to get the coaches involved and looking into holding two lab days upcoming where the kids have an opportunity and optional to go into the, to the lab, take a day away from practice and have them have an opportunity to participate in the impact testing to see if we can, you know, allow these, take advantage of what we have to offer as a tool here for them that can, you know, present, you know, give them the opportunity to understand the awareness that it is concussion due impact. So, that's sort of where we stand in regards to the numbers and a quick update on how we're going to improve the impact testing.
So I appreciate the nervous being at the winter meeting this year and talking about the concussion impacts and stuff. And you did, like I remember my little place hockey, so we all got the concussion sheet. So I think it's great. But I also think it would be great for the coaches to bring the kids in. And it's not mandatory, but it gives them a chance to do it versus, you know.
So, I'm just kind of curious about the schools that make it mandatory. I mean, are they, are they still as competitive as they were before? They don't have athletes not playing anymore because they don't want to take the test.
No, they're still, yeah, they're still competitive. And some of those mandatory schools, they'll do it across the board. Sometimes those mandatory schools, they just do it for high-impact sports themselves, but they.
Soccer, hockey.
Soccer, hockey, football, lacrosse. And then there are some schools that mandatory, make it mandatory for all sports.
Do you remember who they were?
I do have, yes, I do. It's, Nishoba does, does lab testing, which I got the lab idea from. I talked to Superintendent Martino about that. Shrewsbury makes, makes sure that they do it through mandatory high-impact testing. Marlboro, while Shrewsbury do not offer. And Westboro also has lab days and also implements that they turn in form of paperwork that's completed prior to the first day of contact sports.
So it's mandatory in Westboro?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And Shrewsbury, I think you said.
Shrewsbury, Nishoba.
Nishoba.
So we did seek out legal counsel to take in on making it mandatory and, you know, as a precondition, precondition of participation in sports. And there is case law, Sharon versus City of Newton, where it would unlikely stand up in court to make it mandatory. It's just kind of interesting, right, in the perspective of our legal counsel. So, legal counsel's perspective was encouraged, but in terms of making it mandatory, it's not recommended from counsel's perspective.
And, and that's great, but I think that, you know, what we just talked about is the key, which is you can encourage and, you know, you can encourage by saying to the kids, okay, you should do this. And you can encourage by leading the kids up to the terminal and saying, okay, this is the time that we're setting aside. You don't have to do it, but you're right here. So, so I think that that level of encouragement and then the plan that you put in place is, is a really good step forward.
How long is the testing?
It takes, well, well, it's about 45 minutes to an hour. So we'll block off about an hour. Try to pick a day prior to the season. We have to do it after teams are picked. And then moving into that, that leeway of time before the first contest, where we can take away from a practice and we can book anywhere in the labs, windows of about four or five hours that the teams will be able to bring in their team for an hour, make sure we have no overlap and at least encourage them to take.
So the team could do it all together at one time?
So the team could do it all together at one time?
Yeah, they could, yeah.
And therefore they'd all miss rehearsal, or, sorry, practice?
What's that?
They would all miss practice then, together as a team? Okay.
It would be a part of the practice routine.
The other conversation Mike and I had was some schools give the assessment in eighth grade. It's a two-year assessment, so in the spring of eighth grade, you know, having the impact test as an option for eighth graders, that would give us a nice kind of baseline of students coming up into the sports programs and as well as other programs.
Mike, one other idea, it's great that you have the coaches do it. And I know that it's best to have these done as early as possible, but if you get the, you know, team captains to, you know, champion it and team captains do it, I mean, again, it's voluntary for them, but if they do it, maybe that might have even more impact than, you know, a coach suggesting you do it. I mean, a lot of times they'll follow their team captains and so another idea.
Mike, thank you for coming so often to our meetings and enlighten us about what's taking place in the athletics. I was also wondering, because I know that you probably attend the booster meetings, the general booster and then the monthly meetings of...
Yeah.
Okay. Have you brought that up to that collective group about the impact testing?
Yeah, we talk about the, with the booster reps, the general reps, we have a conversation about what is out there to offer in every individual. Also, it's kind of piggybacks what we've discussed at our winter and spring and fall sports meetings, but that information is provided and it's just kind of a follow-up, which is then, you know, that relationship that they have with the coach to the team. But it is brought up at our general booster meetings with the reps. It doesn't allow us to hit every team because a lot of our booster reps are not in season. They come at that specific time, so I try to make sure I follow up with that information throughout every one of our booster meetings.
Okay, thank you. That's just a suggestion.
It would actually be like helpful, like for those booster parents?
Yeah.
Like their first email that goes out to parents to say, "Yeah, take the test." It's a quick line.
So just quick, I mean, you know, God love the parents, but, you know, what happened to that town when they lost that case? I mean, it didn't cost them nickel, I would guess, except for whatever they spent for, if they bothered to even defend themselves in court. But in the meantime, even though that case law exists, we know of two or three towns, like really close to here, that are making it mandatory and apparently getting away with it and now all their kids are tested. It's, I'd really like to see you make some progress on this, Mike, or one of these, one of these meetings, there's going to be a motion and, you know, we'll talk about it in more depth at that point, I guess.
I think one of the things you've got to be mindful of is that, where does that stop? So what do you, when you're next, are you going to prescribe, you know, that they have to have, meet certain, you know, specific height, weight requirements? Do they have to have a certain diet? You know, if you're going to play this sport, here's the amount of energy that we need you to be able to... You've got to be very careful. Now, this one, sure, you know, concussions is the current topic and it's been so for a while in the NFL and other places. And I think it's important that kids be provided this opportunity and parents be encouraged and shown the data for the benefits of this. So we just, I just think you need to be very mindful about, maybe it didn't, you know, it always costs something. It costs something in reputation. It costs something in, you know, someone not playing a sport because, you know, they decided, their family decided, "We're not doing this. You're making it mandatory." And now Johnny didn't get to play the sport that, you know, he was going to be in, you know, an NFL first-round pick. We know he was, right? So you never know where it's going to go. And so you've got to be, I just think, you know, we are given, we're given free choice. We're given choices in America and one of the choices is whether or not, I know, so you've got to, then ask the parents why they're, you know, we haul every parent in here and demand that they make their child take it, you know. How far do we take these things where, you know, a parent says, you know, still, a parent has to authorize and pay the fee for their kid to play any sport, you know, and how much do we need to be the parent? You know, and I think we've got to be very careful about how far we take it. I think you're making great strides on the levels of encouragement. I think you've got some other ideas on how to make that happen. You know, let's see where that goes before we ever, I think, go down the path of legally requiring someone and forcibly making them do something that might be against their and their parents' will.
So I think that your idea starting in eighth grade actually makes a little sense. There was somebody that played hockey with Hayden and he ended up having so many concussions by the time he was still in puberty before he, or before he hit puberty, that he could no longer play hockey. Now, three of those concussions came from outside of a sport, so it doesn't always happen in a sport. But it's a conversation to have because you can only have so many before you hit puberty, before technically you can't or shouldn't play that sport anymore. So maybe starting a little bit younger, the baseline would actually help.
Can I ask a question? Please, no. Can you wait till audience sharing? Sure, I can. Mike, don't leave.
Thank you, Mike. Our next item on the agenda is the MAS, the Mass Joint Conference update. So Sean, Kathleen, and...
Yes.
I just didn't know if you wanted to, we don't usually get a plethora of people who come in during the meeting if you wanted to move up audience sharing, but anyway, if it was that timely, I mean, you can always adjust the schedule as you, the chair sees fit, but...
Okay, so, you...
Yeah, okay.
So we're going to turn it off for audience sharing. We're going to do audience, we're going to move audience sharing to the next.
Technically, you should ask if it's the will of the committee that we lead as the agenda item.
We are so willed.
Hi, everyone. How are you?
Good.
My name's Lisa Dunderdale. I live at 122 Deerfoot Road. I'm a Southborough resident. Actually have been to this meeting several times. Haven't been able to make the last two meetings, so I'm sorry that I missed them, but I did watch them on TV. Let me start with the concussion testing, the impact testing. Question about, if you bring those kids into the lab to complete it, do you need to have a waiver signed by the parents? Or is it okay for you to just go ahead and bring them in? And maybe it's not considered mandatory. So it's just something to think about. I really like the idea of the captains maybe taking on the initiative to get the other kids involved. Certainly, maybe the athletic council could even come up with a promotion program that falls in line with the incentive program that you offer your kids to attend the games and stuff during the seasons. And maybe you could give them points for their attendance and for completing the impact testing. Another thought is, you may not have access to the eighth graders because they're not here yet at the high school level, but why, why not make it, maybe promote it a little bit more to the ninth graders? Because if it's a two-year assessment, you get them at ninth grade. Maybe you get them again at eleventh grade and you've got their, you've got their baseline testing there. And then, of course, if something happens, they probably will be tested again. So, those are, those are my thoughts on it. I certainly think you've got some really creative students here. I certainly had the opportunity to work with three of them on the handbook, the Tom Hanks Athletic Student Athletic Handbook. I think you could teach them a lot with creating some type of promotion program to get everyone involved. And you've got some, some great bones already to continue with it. All right, so I don't know if anyone else has sharing, but I'm actually here and it wasn't for that that I'm here to share. So I do have something else that I wanted to discuss. So let me get my notes out. So Mike, are you, do you have to report on our concussions that happen as a result of this on a regular basis? Is there an annual reporting mechanism?
Yes.
So with that said, I think that's great that...
Lisa, we can't have, we can't answer questions?
Yes, actually, I understand that and I'm actually, I'm actually kind of sad about that because I think this is really something that should be discussed and I'm hoping that at some point we will have a discussion. So, it's great to hear that there is some testing, I mean, there's some reporting around concussions and that at the end of the school year or maybe at the end of each season, you have to send a report off to the state saying that two of our kids had concussions. But I don't think we should stop there. And I've had this conversation before. We need to take a look at the injury reporting process that Elgonquin has. It's part of the handbook. This, and I think there's a process there, but last year, that process didn't follow through for my daughter. I don't know if there are other students that an injury report wasn't created after an injury. But I think we need to take a look at that process so that we can improve, improve communication with our, between the parents and the school. Certainly, there's great benefits to these reports. This nurse at the school didn't know that my daughter had an injury. There was supposed to be an injury report sent the next morning. No one knew that she was going to be coming in on crutches and it wasn't, and I had many questions just to get her back into the process of school. So, we need to have something in place and it needs to be followed through on. Those reports will be used in return to play as an athlete. The data collection is going to help to reduce the risk of injuries. Why did these injuries happen? You've got the data. You can take a look at it. Was it an equipment failure? Was, was it something with the facilities? Maybe, maybe a groundhog came out and dug a hole and someone tripped in it? Field conditions because the issue that happened at the soccer game in Marlborough when three athletes were injured that night, the field conditions changed. It was a torrential downpour and no one stopped the game. Are we, maybe people are, maybe the kids are getting injured because of preseason conditioning? Maybe the, you know, we can take a look at all this stuff. So, you should be able to take a look at the data that's been collected and come up with some, you know, at the end of this, end of the fall season, Mike can be reporting on, you know, how many minor incidents happened? How many serious incidents, accidents happened? How many major life-threatening incidents happened? And it would be easy to record that and just get an aggregate report that could be shared with all of us. So we have an understanding of, you know, what's the athletic department having to deal with? And can we make some changes to address those, those injuries and reduce the risk of injury for our student athletes? So, you know, I would love to have a report, as Mike does at the end of each season, on, you know, how our teams have done, but I'd like to understand, you know, what is our trainer dealing with? How many injuries has he had to address? I think it's important information. And like I said, I know we can't have a conversation here, but I'm glad that I have the opportunity to talk about this. The other thing that I have is, I have to comment on is the coaches' responsibilities and expectation section that was provided to you by Mike for the student athlete handbook. And I was a little bit concerned about this. I should, I'm sorry, it's called the Guide to Athletics for Student Athletes and Parents. I took a look at this to get a sense of what, you know, who it was directed to because when this came up at one of the previous meetings, I thought it was supposed to be directed to, to coaches. What, you know, what your responsibilities and expectations are. And I really feel that this is more of a, it wasn't directed to the coaches. It was more, more to kind of let the parents know that these are the guidelines that they have and these are our expectations and they're very vague guidelines. And I'm really concerned about the last two sentences in this. "The parents and guardians entrust their children to the guidance of the coaches. Parent guardians have the right to expect that all coaches have our students' best interests at heart and that the coaches' decisions place our students' welfare above any emphasis on competition or winning." Last year, I found out that coaches don't have the authority to cancel a game without forfeiting. And when I spoke to our coach, he basically said, "If I canceled the game, I would have forfeited the match." So I'm curious as to how these coaches' responsibilities and expectations are being communicated to our coaches. Because if you wanted to put something in there about the athletic director and the principal, encourage our coaches to cancel a game or make a decision based on, based on the fact that, or based on their concern for increased injury to our students, I think that would be fine. But if you look at the language here, it's not, this isn't directed to the coaches. It's just something for the parents to feel that our coaches have the authority and will make good decisions to keep our kids safe. And I did not see that last year. I have asked time and time again, who had the authority to cancel that game? I've gotten no direct answer from the administration. I haven't gotten a direct answer from MIAA. And the only way that, you know, the coaches are going to be able to cancel are, you know, Mike saying, "If you feel that the conditions on the field aren't good and it's going to cause problems and maybe injure some of our students, then you should be able to call the game." So, so thank you for my time to talk with you today. I would love to have a meeting with all of you. I've been asking for a meeting for some time now. And yeah, no, my kids aren't here anymore, but I'm still here because I am concerned about the safety of our student athletes at Elgonquin. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa? Is there anyone else for audience sharing tonight? Okay, we're going to go back to the update. So Sean and Kathleen, do you guys want to...
Sure. There were, there were a lot of different sessions, if you've been before. But two in particular that I, I went to that I thought pertain to us in Elgonquin. One was a chapter, or this one was actually more for me, learning for this committee, is the Chapter Seventy update. The finance director for Worcester gave it and she is phenomenal. She started at the Pilgrims and brought us up to current time. She started at the Pilgrims and brought us up to current time. So the history of public education, funding of public education. But she broke down a lot on what's happening now. And as Superintendent has mentioned, there will be, you know, updates over the next few years for regional transportation, for special ed transportation. It's not all at once. It's going to be phased in over the next few years, and other adjustments to the formula that will help out regional districts and other towns. Also, knowing also, it looks at, like, business income in the town now, the formula. It looks at properties. They're taking in a lot of things in account that they hadn't in before, was interesting. And that they're doing more for rural studies, like, the towns west of us are saying that they're underfunded because of lack of income. So there are more, the bill's not set. There are still committees going on, so there still could be more updates to come. Of course, that's all in a good financial climate, too, she said. The other one, in light of our busing presentation, I went to a presentation on Safe Roots. It's a state program, and Superintendent said we had engaged them a couple of years ago, but they do some audits and review of data to look at bus stops, traffic patterns, and traffic flow. So it was a good presentation to see that there's a free service out there that we might be able to engage again, or use data we have from before. But a lot of other good speakers in sessions, too.
I think for me, it was a great orientation to the variety of sessions and resources that were available, and what was more sales-related than educative. I did go to one that I found very impressive from the SAGAS group regarding wellness and the types of activities that they're doing in their school in order to meet wellness of both families as well as students, and how involved they were with social workers on staff. And then I went to a couple on the arts. But it was a good orientation for two days to see what's available, and I look forward to making a commitment to that in the future.
So I, too, went to a few sessions. I think the highlight for me was a session, it was called "Compelling Communication: How to Strengthen Your District's Brand in the Community." And it was presented by Chris Horan, who's the president of Horan Communications. He was the late mayor of Boston, Mayor Thomas Menino's Communication Director. He was also the Boston Public Schools Chief Communication Officer. And he really talked about, you know, it's not about the tools, it's about the message, and that to stay on to your message and keep it simple and relatable and understandable. The second workshop that I went to that I found very helpful was by Dyson Rehoboth Regional School District. And it was titled "Achieve Energy Savings, Facility Upgrades, Renewable Incentives, and Student Enrichment." And they presented their case study of how they used carports, biomass, and LED lighting to generate new revenue to fund their capital plan. So it was timely and well-done. And the last one, I think, was "Conducting a Meaningful and Effective Superintendent Evaluation." So it was riveting. The goal really is to streamline the process. I know that you've all found the process very, very simple and easy to understand, so the goal seemed even more understandable. So simplifying the rubric and the number of goals and so forth is one of the state's goals that they're endeavoring to achieve. And it was also, I think, the highlight is just hearing and meeting other superintendents and other school committees, and hearing what challenges are being faced across the Commonwealth.
That's awesome. Well, thank you for going.
So what about the delegate?
I was called away because of some business at my own district.
Oh, no.
So I didn't get an opportunity to stay late on Friday for that.
Another riveting report.
Yeah. Although, at a couple of sessions, there were some heavy lobbying going on during sessions, so I missed that.
Well, thank you for going.
Yes.
Thanks for that opportunity.
Yes.
Okay. Our next is superintendent's report to the committee.
So we'll begin with the principal's report, and with class size ratios and standardized assessment results.
Do you want to start with the overall principal's report, or jump right into the data?
We'll start with the original.
Okay.
It'll be a top act of all.
Yes, riveting, and then you can follow up. Thank you for that. Thank you for the opportunity. So November's principal report, our artists are Lauren Dickerson and Hayden Shane Mero. They created a newsletter, so Ms. Collins shared that artwork with us, so I made sure I highlighted that at the top of the page. Wanted to thank them for that. Our marketing, nutrition, and culinary arts educators, as in previous years, have come together to do their annual Model Food Truck event. This year, I've asked them to showcase some of their pieces in the library. So as you leave, please take some time to look at that. It's a great cross-curricular opportunity, and it gives the students the opportunity to practice effective communication on articulating their thoughts. What was it that went into the plan? What was their marketing strategy? And giving them those real-life skills that they can apply beyond Algonquin's walls. I will get back to my shoe photo there, because it ran away on me, so that's on the second page. A robotics team advisor, Mr. Strickland, along with Julie Doyle, support from district staff, were able to really promote STEM Week throughout Anisboro, grades three through five. Our high schoolers visited some of the schools and brought their robots. And really, just, it was exciting to have the younger students not only connect with the older students, but see what really is capable here at Algonquin and Anisboro schools. So thank you to Julie and Dan for that opportunity. A little farther down, our Harbinger, once again, for the third year in a row, has attained the most prestigious award by Columbia Scholastic Press Association, crowned finalist for hybrid, which means both their digital and their paper print. So again, this is the most prestigious award, and it is their third consecutive year. Wonderful opportunity, wonderful work by them, and thank you to their advisor, Ms. Copens. Our ARHS programming club, led by and coached by Mr. Forham, competed in a national hackathon, and they were 19th nationally. So the skill sets that they develop within the classroom and within these extracurricular activities are profound, and to see them apply them at the national level really is a true testament to the work of the students and their abilities. You heard Jacob earlier today in costume, full effect there, promoting "Mamma Mia." Opening day is tomorrow, so hopefully we'll see everyone there. I think I'm up Saturday, Thursday. Ms. Carmen Yanni's going Friday, so hopefully we'll see some of our school community members there. Thank you to our Army National Guardsman and school committee member, Mr. Kalenda, as well as some other members who spoke at our Veterans Day opportunity. Wonderful success. You heard from one of our students here this night. It's a great opportunity when it is completely student-run and student-planned. This is Operation Tomahawk's event. They reach out to our veterans, they reach out to our students that want to talk about their choices, to promote and/or to pursue the military. And it continues to be a highly successful event in which students and teachers opt to attend the event. So I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you for coming, always being a support for Algonquin, and to thank our Operation Tomahawk, led by advisor Ms. Johnson. I thought Ms. Cronin, Mr. Berry, and our CAP students were able to successfully replenish the local pantries, who are very early on food drive. Usually, it's a little later on in the year, but they rallied all of Algonquin and our community members. What a wonderful success to give back to both South Borough and North Borough food pantries. I wanted to point out some of our Girls Cross Country Club work. You've heard me speak about them in the past. They, in the past, have done "Back on My Feet" and other initiatives. This year, they worked early in the season to do goal-setting. They picked four goals. One was food pantry, one was to volunteer at a local 5K to support a nonprofit, again, to support "Back on My Feet" program, which you've heard me speak about in the past, and then to collect running shoes and clothing donations for youth in other programs to promote running. And that was my shoe picture that ran away on me. This is all run by them. It's something that they wanted to do, and they chose these four goals, and they accomplished every single one of them. And it's a wonderful opportunity. Thank you to Coach Galvin, Mariana Cologne, and our senior captains that are listed there. Our ARHS best buddies participated in the friendship walk. They were the top fundraiser out of all of the fundraisers at the school, and they raised over 24% of the overall funds raised for that program. That's our ARHS best buddy programs that you heard Ms. Ticklely on about tonight. Hopefully, someone's participated in the National Art Honor Society Fall Paint Night. I have not. I don't have that skill set. But again, that was a great success. Students work with teachers, parents, other students, to teach them some artistic skills. It's a great opportunity. Our teachers speak really well of it, our students speak really well of it, and I just wanted to thank Ms. Deser and Ms. Duffy for hosting that this year. I always like to point out a date. It's always important. Our senior ball is set for May 21st at Wachusett Mountain. So before we know it, we will be in the thick of prom season. So just like to get that date out there as often as possible. I am going to skip athletics, because we get an in-the-person update from Adi Masarino, so I will come back around, and you can hear it from him personally. Onto our department news. Ms. Griffin, once again, she had done this in previous years, coordinated with the library staff and other computer central educators, as well as Algonquin teachers, and hosted the International Journalists. And with her work and her team's work, she's there to promote good, effective journalism skills, as well as media literacy, a skill that, you know, allows students to navigate all the different pieces of information that they get, and be able to select, you know, valid, reliable information, and make appropriate choices from that. Going down to science, I think it's always important to, you know, say great job to our students. We had our Science National Honor Society. We inducted 50 new inductees. Unified basketball, along with the opening of our play tomorrow night, we are hosting the jamboree here at 3 o'clock. So feel free to come at 3:00. Just stay the night, right through the play. We'd love to have you. For library, it was really fun to see some of our departments embrace Spirit of Halloween. They completely transformed the library into candyland, the little squares, the little boxes. They invited the Tiny Tomahawks, they invited our CAP program. Our students, our Algonquin students are obviously mentors, and in some of those classes, and so they were able to participate in some of the fun activities. The Tiny Tomahawks had a blast doing the work. I just wanted to point out, Ms. Honey does really well at keeping up on the data. I'm always asking her about it. Look at the numbers that students have accessed the library as a resource. Now, one of Ms. Honey's goals was to take Algonquin's library and media resources and make them online. So through leveraging Canvas, students can access a lot of our research databases, and then you can see how many students are coming in here and using it as an additional resource, whether it's to come get a book, whether it's to work with a class. I mean, 5,000 students came to the library on their own. That's huge numbers, huge numbers, to come back and use the library that much. The math department also completely embraced Halloween, as they did the factorials, a little play on the Incredibles. I thought that was really cute. I wanted to point out that our math teams continue to dominate, continue to dominate year after year. Our freshmen took home the gold recently, and it's a true testament to the wonderful mathematics skills that our eighth graders come in from middle school and apply it right here at the freshman level. And that's it. I'm going to turn over to Adi Masarino, so we can get an in-person fall update.
Yeah, thank you, Principal Walsh. We had an amazing fall season in terms of results. We had some teams participating in the community service. First, a little bit differently than what we reported in the last school meeting was, to start, I'd like to let you know, we have our Hall of Fame event coming up. It's our year to host, and we have 11 inductees going in to our Athletic Hall of Fame, which is going to be held on November 29th, 2019, 11:30 a.m. in our Algonquin cafeteria. The following inductees, which is, I would like to go through, Tom Lowe, which is a Spirit Award, which is linking ARHS to the community, Kelsey Borden, which is an athlete, Fran Witten, former athletic director, Mike Rinn, an athlete, Emily Borke, athlete, and it's Southern, which is going to be a Significant Contributor Award for 16 years of service for ARHS Athletics. Chloe Herzeg, Eric Wright, Derek Shor, Mike Roy as coach, and Lori Griffin as coach. And hopefully, a pleasure, and love to see you all there at our event, right after our Thanksgiving Day game on the 28th, when we play against Westboro. Principal Walsh mentioned the great work the Girls Cross Country did into the community, so thank you, Principal Walsh, for that. I also like to let boys and girls soccer team also teamed up with best buddies at our double-headers this year to, again, continue to promote awareness. Best buddies program, we had eight TRC Month awards for October. This is the male, female athlete that was voted by the coaches and teammates. This award recognizes the outstanding student athletes for their demonstration of leadership, teamwork, sportsmanship, and excellence on and off the field. We had eight nominated against other coaches and athletes. Our ambassadors program will continue. We are attending three workshops, one of which is coming up, our Leadership Workshop, which is coming up this Friday at Gillette Stadium. Three of our ambassadors, Lucy Godwin, Nick Alcock, and Danielle Adams, will be attending that. We will continue to promote. We had a great captain's breakfast for our fall captains. We will move into the winter for our winter captains, and again, in the spring. We held our Second Annual National Signing Day, when we had 11 student athletes that are going to go on and continue their collegiate career and play at Division I, II, or III school for all various sports, which is lacrosse, and baseball, swimming, and right across board, girls across, boys across. So it's amazing achievement for those 11 athletes who have the opportunity to continue their career. Like to go into our season results. For all of you to know, we've had a fantastic fall. I mean, in regards to results, just came off of the state semifinals game yesterday. Unfortunately, we came on the short end against Westfield, but we had four MidWatch A-League regular season champions. We had one MidWatch tournament champion, we have one MidWatch A-League meet champion, and we had Central Mass champion. Two, actually, Central Mass champions. We had our girls soccer coach, Scott Tegert, and boys soccer coach, Ken Morn, were MidWatch Coaches of the Year. So just to go down the line, boys soccer had an overall record of 11, 1-5, finished the regular season as MidWatch A-League champs, turned to two seed in the MIA playoffs and lost to Westboro in the quarterfinals. Girls soccer had an overall record of 14, 0-3, finished the regular season as MidWatch A-League champions, and earned the number-one seed in the playoffs, Central Mass champs, beating Wachusett, but lost to Westfield in the state semifinals. Field hockey had an overall record of 15, 1-2, and finished the regular season as MidWatch A-League champs, and earned the number-two seed in MIA playoffs, and lost to Neshoba in the district finals. Volleyball had an impressive record of 60-2, and finished the regular season as MidWatch A-League champs, and earned the three seed in MIA playoffs, but lost to Hopkinton in the semifinals. Boys golf finished their season with an overall record of 781, but won their MidWatch A-Tournament. Girls cross country, 4-2, finished third in MidWatch A-League meet, and finished second in Central Mass Division 1 meet. Boys cross country were 5-1 and won MidWatch A-League championship meet on 10/26 for the first time in 20 years, and they're Central Mass Division 1 champions for the first time in school history. Football team is 4-6 and earned the program's 300th win with a win over North Middlesex. Cheerleading performance team finished second place in game day, finished fourth at the Shepherd Hill Invitational, and MidWatch League Game Day finished first and 10th at states. Performance team finished sixth at leagues and seventh at regionals. Our unified basketball, as Principal Walsh alluded to, will conduct their four regular season games that they held against Neshoba, Grutton, Dunstable, Shrewsbury, and Marlboro, and we will have it for the second straight year, holding the Special Olympics Unified Basketball Jamboree tomorrow at 3:00. There are seven area local school teams that will come here to compete in games and different skills challenged. So I can't believe the fall is quickly coming to an end, and we're talking about Thanksgiving, and then Monday, December 2nd, we'll be kicking off the winter season. And looking forward to Thanksgiving, the Hall of Fame ceremony, and then going with the...
Thank you, Mike. So then we'll transition to the data, if that's appropriate. So the first piece of data that we'll present is this...
Can we do questions first?
Is that how we should do it? Sorry.
Well, it's still somewhat current. You know, the principal's report, you mentioned, in October, 2,200 Chromebooks loaned out in a month. Is that like 100 kids coming in every single day for the month and checking out the same Chromebook that they turned in yesterday? I thought we were going to just give them to them. But they're still turning them in on a daily basis?
Per month or a day?
Is that what that means?
So that means that teachers may have ran lab sessions. They took out a whole Chromebook cart and brought it to the classroom to make it easier for them. It could be a one-on-one loan, it could just be someone borrowed it for a period. It's the multitude of any time a Chromebook was taken out of the library.
So the day doesn't begin with a bunch of students walking in and checking out a Chromebook that they had to turn in yesterday?
No. And the students that are taking out Chromebooks consecutive days, we're pushing to have them take the Chromebook home.
Yeah.
That's where the work has come from. Yes.
Thank you.
I'd just like to make two connections. As the committee salays onto the senior citizens, I'd like to thank Dr. Walsh and her staff for extending tonight's dress rehearsal to the seniors in both North Borough and South Borough. And I know the ones that I talked to in North Borough were thrilled to come tonight. So thank you very much for opening up. Our school, as they could see, had dress rehearsals. They were thrilled to death to come. they could see at dress rehearsals, they were thrilled to death to come tonight. And I'd also like to thank Mike, who in our conversations has reached out, and he said that he's going to be providing passes?
Complimentary sports passes.
For both of the seniors in Northboro and to Southboro. So I think it's wonderful, along with all the wonderful things that you're doing here, it wasn't highlighted, but I just wanted to let the community and the members know that this school district is reaching out and thanking and being encompassing, encompassing our senior citizens. So thank you very much.
I just had a question about how the, it was in a lot of the newsletters, the See Something, Say Something app, and how's that going? And could you tell us a little bit more about it? It can report just anything? Does it report to a central feature or someone here?
So we had the opportunity to vet this program, so this was a longer process. And then what we did was here at Elgonquin, and the middle schools followed a similar format. The day that they rolled it out differed depending on their needs, we showed the training video to both our faculty and our students on how to actually access the app, make the phone call or report through a web-based program, excuse me. And so during that day, we did it during our double, in which we showed the video, we had the conversations and the follow-up. So the app itself is live, and we vet tips as they come in, information, concerns, supports, just additional ways that we can help support our community and our safety. It's working well for our community. Our students do access it as needed, and we have a team of five here at the school that are all immediately informed of what the information could be, and based on the information, we respond directly, either working really, really closely with our School Resource Officer, Northboro PD, and/or our crisis team. What occurs for us? I think you asked, how does it work?
That, I think you answered.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the tips will go through, or the phone calls, or the conversations, or the web-based reports, will go through a call center down south with trained staff members to actually vet the information, and then based on that process, we'll then send it either to the school, or if it's a critical status, we'll immediately enact the supports for that family.
In the middle school, has this too?
It's a six through twelve.
Oh, okay.
Program.
That's great.
And it's through the Sandy Hook Promise Organization, and this is all funded through the Sandy Hook.
That's fantastic.
No cost to the districts.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's great. Thank you.
Just want to commend the administration for, you know, the assembly that took place last week and Operation Tomahawk, the wonderful work that Ms. Johnston and the student volunteers do to help support the veterans in the, in the local community. It was one of the, you know, one of my most proud moments, I was able to speak in front of, I think it was upwards of six hundred students, and they asked some great questions. You know, it's a, it's a group of young volunteers who look to, you know, help out needy veterans in, in the area with clothing and, and food and whatnot, and I was so impressed with those students and, and the overall student body and the, the assembly that took place. And every time that we have a Veterans Day event or Memorial Day event in Southboro, and I'm sure the same as in Northboro, there are always Elgonquin students there, there are always students playing taps, there's students who came this past Veterans Day and sang, there's always the Elgonquin band that comes in Memorial Day. I mean, and without those things, you know, our, our observances would be dramatically different. So great work that Operation Tomahawk, Ms. Johnston and others are doing for our veterans, and kudos to the administration for supporting them. Oh, and I'm an Army reservist, so there is a difference between National Guard and Reserve.
Awkward, thank you.
It's a teachable moment.
It is, you know, because a lot, well, honestly, a lot of our younger students, they, they don't know the National Guard, oh, you can get called up by the governor to do what? And Reserve, you know, your federal statute, you have no association with the, with the
Dive into the data?
Yeah.
Okay. So for the first set of data that we're looking at, it's our class sizes. For the last two years, I've had the opportunity to run this data and present it here in front of school community. This year, through development of shared leadership, I just want to commend Tim McDonald's work. He's taking over some of the scheduling here at Elgonquin as we learn new roles and grow our own leadership team skill sets. So Tim has comprised this data that I'll present this night, tonight. So looking at the first chart, graph one, Elgonquin's nineteen-twenty classes distribution for first semester, it trends as it has trended in the past, very similar to previous department averages. It just gives you a visual of where we fall. The majority of average class sizes across all sections in almost every single department is below twenty, with PE and health just being a little above twenty. Table one breaks down for us across departments, classes above twenty-five, classes below ten, and then again, reiterates the average. So for example, if you look at Fine Arts, there are five sections in the Fine Arts Department that run above twenty-five, and I could speak to the why behind that. Many of it is intentional, below in the third, in the second table. So if you run across table one across the data, we have a few classes within each department that are slightly above twenty-five. We have a few classes in each department, in most of the departments that are below ten, and again, many of those are intentional. For the class sizes below ten, I know I received this question last year, so I'm just going to address it in advance. If you take a look, for example, at math, and you're asking, you know, why do you have seven classes that run below ten? Those are tiered interventions. They're very, very specific for student support needs. And so that's, those, some of those numbers are very, very intentional. If you hop down to table two, this is where I explain the why behind some of the class sizes exceeding the twenty-five limit. So symphonic band, the more the merrier. So the way that Ms. Collins builds the program is that she tries to have an array of different types of musicians, and that's what builds that band's capacity and the students' learning opportunity. Public speaking, for example, it's a coaching class. You have Ms. Morrison and Ms. Salt both in the class together. Again, this is another more the merrier, they capsize this forty intentionally, so that students can have that audience as they learn public speaking skills. And you'll see that across the Fine Arts. In math, out of six sections for Algebra Two honors, there is one section that is above, it's at twenty-six, which you see in the parentheses, and the same occurs for the AP Calc and pre-Calc honors, and where you have one or two students in the class above the twenty-five. That's intentional. If a student wants to move up or take on the challenge, we make it happen, we're not going to hold them back. So you're going to see that class size move up to twenty-six or twenty-seven. For health and fitness, we have nine different sections running, depending on some of the constraints or conflicts in eleventh grade student schedule. You know, they start getting to those Singleton classes where there's that one AP class or that one elective, you may have one section of PE eleven that's going to be above that twenty-five. And then our world language, as everyone knows, in this group, we continuously try to grow our world language program, so you're going to see some of those sections pop out. I just wanted to point out that the second from the last row, you'll see a combined college prep overlay on an honors. Whenever you can have the opportunity for students to experience that upper level class in a safe setting, we're going to do that at Elgonquin. It's the same philosophy by having students try an AP class, they're going to get more out of the class. Do you want to do questions on this one before we switch to standardized testing?
Well, I would, I mean, I don't really have a question, I appreciate the data. You know, one thing that would be terrific is to kind of track this over time. You know, I don't really know what I'm looking at. I mean, are these numbers better than last year's? Are they better than two years ago? Is there a trend that we could spot if we saw, you know, two or three years worth of the data kind of side by side? You know, it looks like you do that on all the, all the testing reports that we're going to hear in a moment, but from class size, it'd be nice to just kind of track it historically a little bit. Is it just kind of such a snapshot in time? I think it's great, but, you know, I don't know. Is it greater than last year? We can't even, you know, we can't even give you the pat on the back that maybe you deserve without kind of knowing that. But I think these are, these are good numbers to keep. So few classes, you know, with twenty-five kids or more in them, it's, it's way better than it used to be a few years ago, I, I think. And I think, I think the data, if we're reporting it, it shows that.
So, because I, because I love my job, I have last year's data, as you know how I am, Paul. So you can give the pat on the back, but we'll save it for later. Great feedback, though, to kind of see the trending patterns. We continue either to improve or stay at the same level. So, and with Tim taking on scheduling, it's going to be wonderful to offer that new perspective. Ms. Conner, he's done a wonderful job, I know I've assisted with some of it, so hopefully we'll continue to keep that trend forward. And if you want it, it's right here, Paul. So I'm going to turn it over to Andy, who's now, in the past, Tim has done this data, so if we all grow our shared leadership skills, Andy's taking on the standardized testing for tonight.
Yeah, so that's a good segue into our first graph here. Our five-year AP summary, just kind of looking back from 2019 back to 2015, you'll see that in 2019, we're two points up from 2018. Moving down into the numbers below that for the AP tests, we currently have roughly twenty-two different content areas that are offered here with forty-eight sections that students have a choice to take from. We had four hundred and four different test takers for the AP exams this year, and a total of seven hundred and ninety-four total exams that were taken. So there's a different, the difference between 2018 and 2019 there, our enrollment's down a little bit, but also the students who, at the time of the exam, students who maybe have committed to a college, or if their college is not accepting that particular exam, they may be taking a course, so they may not just sign up to take the test. So that, excuse me, that could factor in, and that's true with the ACT results as well. In terms of our data versus, for ACT versus the state of Massachusetts, that information hasn't been out yet. Same in ATs with the College Board, they haven't provided that data yet. So that's why those, those boxes are blank. So a couple highlights going back up to the AP exams there. Music, oral, non-oral, music theory, Spanish AP, calc, calculus, biology, computer science, physics, all had a hundred percent of scores with a three or better. So huge kudos to our students who prepare for that, but also huge kudos to our teachers who are certainly a big part of preparing for that. And those weren't exams with just like one test taker, not to minimize that individual, those were exams with eighteen-plus test takers. So there was a significant number of students involved in those exams. Moving down to the SAT data on your next page there, we have the 2018, 2019 summary, and then 2019 is broken down by month, as you can see below on the chart there, and those averages for the reading and writing and the math, those averages are taken from those months from March 2019 through our, the SAT in October 2019. So that's what those numbers there indicate. The five hundred seventeen includes multiple tests that one student could have taken, could have taken, so a student may sign up for the test in a moment in time. We've offered additional SAT prep classes this year and, and last year as well, so students can have that opportunity to prepare for those tests. And we continue to trend as we have in the past. The fluctuation is normal, it's, it's, it's normal as we have in the past years as well. The graph down below there just kind of gives you a little comparison with us versus the state for SATs, and that green mark there is just the college readiness benchmarks, which for reading and writing is four eighty and for math is five thirty. So that's, that's where you can see kind of where we stand against Massachusetts in what College Board is saying a student is college-ready for. The last page is your MCAS data from 2019. So this was, this is important to mention that this was the first year the high school rolled out the computer-based test. So you'll see the scores from 2018, the scores from 2019, were two different tests in, in how the students actually took them, in that for just English, ELA, and math. Science was still a paper-based test in 2019. So Desi also redid their, their standards here, so it went from advanced, proficient, needs improvement, to warning failing, to exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, and so on. So you can see how they kind of redid that as well. So the K-8 students have experienced this in terms of the computer-based test, comparing movement from us to the state. So when you look at our movement from us to the state, you know, we're still in, our significant movement is really in just the top two tiers there, the exceeding expectations and the meeting expectations, where the state really fluctuates between all four. And you can really see that with the ELA and the math and the partially meeting expectations and not meeting expectations. So our biggest movement is really in that top part, so most of our students are, are getting to that point. Students were well-prepared for the MCAS test. Our teachers spent a lot of time doing practice tests with them and, and really getting them ready for even just the kind of format of the computer-based test, and, and preparing them for that kind of, the, the outside factors that go into it. So when you look at our data and you continue to compare it to the state, if you look at ELA, and, and this isn't necessarily in there, but we pulled some data from 2018 to 2019. In 2018, we were seventieth for ELA out of two hundred and ninety-seven schools. In 2019, we made a significant jump to fifty-fourth out of three hundred and three schools. For math, in 2018, we were sixty-fourth out of two hundred and ninety-seven, and in 2019, this year, we were thirty-fifth out of three hundred and three. And the science, again, that was still a paper-based test. Last year, two, excuse me, two years ago, 2018, we were forty-six out of two hundred and ninety-six, and 2019, we were forty-second out of three oh two. So we made significant gains in all of them, even with the computer-based tests for ELA and math. So this year, this coming year, 2020, our science, the science exam through the state will be computer-based.
So can I ask a question? And you may not have the answer to this, it might be a guidance question. So AP tests, so I know that you have to sign up by November 11 for them, and we talk about fees. Would that ever change? Like, I don't know if you guys know, like, it's so crazy if your kid takes an AP course, how much it costs them, costs us for them to take the AP test. You know what I mean? Like, I know you, you know.
So I'm, it's my understanding, College Board sets those fees, and we don't have too much control over that, yeah.
Yeah, it's like a crazy, it's like a hundred, it costs me three hundred and some odd dollars.
Right, which is why those numbers may be, may be different because of the fact that a kid may not need to take that AP test, they're not going to pay that fee to just take a test. Yeah, yeah.
And then did you guys notice at all, like, a difference? Like, are kids taking more SATs now that they've changed to the ACT format now, or no? I know they're, they're changing their format a little bit, did, did you guys notice?
So I didn't see any significant difference in when I was putting this data together. That wasn't something that I was digging in, though, to look for, so my apologies, I didn't see any significant difference, so that jumped out, yeah.
Change at all?
So, I mean, I, I thought this kind of jumped out at me. In the SAT graph on page two, it says, I think it's the third page we've been looking at, it says three hundred and twenty-four kids took the test in 2018 and five hundred and seventeen took it in 2019. I mean, that strikes, if, if that's correct, that's a significant change for some reason, right? Is that not?
The five hundred seventeen represents students who have taken it, may have taken it more than once for the SAT. So I can't really speak to the 2018 data, then it's my understanding that that number were, was the total kids who took it in that time, so.
They couldn't have taken it twice in 2018? Those kids weren't allowed to do that?
They still kept taking it twice, am I correct in that?
So what happened with the difference between 2018 and 2019 data? Excuse me, Andy, sorry. The, as Andy mentioned, some of our College Board data is slightly delayed, so we have not had the explicit number of students who took the test. All we can do is add up how many tests they took. So when you look at the 2019 data, we're double counting kids, whereas if you look at the 2018 data, we have the absolute value of students that took the test. So it does make the data a little confusing, but as Andy mentioned, we went above and beyond and tried to offer additional test preps, so we may have inadvertently also skewed the number on top of that.
Got it.
Need to talk with your hands, that helps.
Wasn't there a test that, like, just happened?
Yeah. Yeah.
Like, two weeks ago? Maybe that day is not in there yet. There's another test that I think is happening in December. You know, those are already, of course, accounted for in 2018, but are not yet in 2019.
Well, I'm going to shrug my shoulders too, Dan, because the data is so delayed. We're not able to get kind of the very clear data that we had for 2018.
Yeah.
They've just changed the platform. The same thing's happened for AP exams, and we're working through it. So, for us at the school level, our job is to make sure they have access to it and that we're giving them the test prep opportunities.
And honestly, I think one of the main things is, you see the great results that the students are demonstrating, their skills in both English and math, I mean, significantly above the state levels, dramatically above even the levels that are considered as college-ready. So, impressive, very impressive.
Anyone else?
With the MCAS and the new cut scores, were there any students, or did it affect like any number of students differently than in past years in terms of like having to do, retake the test or anything? Or pretty much all the same? Because they, you could partially meet expectation, but still pass this time, but it didn't change anything significant?
No significant change.
Okay.
More questions? On the AP test, is there any flexibility around when the kids take the tests? I've heard of situations where they might have to take a test, you know, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, which is obviously not ideal.
Just a little whispering. So, depending on if a student has testing accommodations, the student may not test on that exact date. They may test on a slightly different date. So, those would be what you hear about. And then, we had that at El Gonquin. We had testing accommodations where a student took it on a different date. And I believe that that was AP testing, but I could be wrong. It could have been SAT. But primarily, they don't allow for...
Not a lot of flexibility.
No. It's very rare. Just with, and also to answer your question, Kathy, the date and when you have to pay the fee, that's also set by them. So, remember, this year, they moved it...
No, I know that. I just was floored, you know, when you click checkout.
In the past, our parents have had a couple more months to prepare for this, whereas this year, it was due, I think, three months.
Because last year was due later.
Yeah, January, February.
Yeah, it was due in the Amber stuff.
Yeah. And so, now it's November.
Just prepping you for the college expenses.
I'm already used to that. I'm a bit negative. Can I ask one more question? On the computer-based tests, can they use paper to do like the math problems and stuff like that? They can still do, work it all out on paper?
Scratch paper is allowed, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, next, on this current calendar report, enrollment, we don't have the October. And I'll keep pointing out the enrollment percentage, the 63.11 and 36.89. We continue to have conversations with the town administrators around an impact of those percentages on the regional budget and the state's enrollment.
So, the 10-1 numbers are the ones that are locked in by law, right, Fennigan? And that didn't shift? From what I, I just did some quick, 63.14.
So, again, these are the, you know, the highest enrollment percentage for Northboro that we've seen in, you know, I think, the past decade. So, it will have an impact on Northboro's.
Next in your packet is the annual Nezbec enrollment projections, obviously an important document as we plan for the FY '21 budget. I think it's, you know, if we look at enrollment at the high school level, you know, over the past decade, we've seen almost 600 less students than we had in 2009. And we will continue to see some decreases in enrollment over the next four, four or five years. So, it's just, as we look at resources and we talk, I think it will help with some of those class sizes charts that we have, but it is something for us to keep an eye on. Next in your packet is the FY '20 monthly general fund expenditure report. Now, can you just share a few updates?
So, as you can see, we have 2.88% remaining on the budget. We have been working very closely with Dr. Walsh and with Michelle Palbo here to identify any expenditures that they anticipate making throughout the school year and encumbering those funds, so that money is set aside for them when they are prepared to make those purchases. So, that's why the number is slightly lower than where we were last year, but it's because we're intentionally making sure that money is set aside for those purposes. And so, we feel good about where we are, and we continue to meet on a weekly basis to monitor the biggest impact of the budget.
See you next time.
Yep. Do I have a motion to vote? Paul?
I'll move that we accept the monthly general fund expenditure report as of October 31st, 2019 until audited.
I would second that motion.
First, I have Paul. Second, I have Dan. Any addition? All right, those are favor? Those approve? Passes?
Next in your packet is the FY '20 statement of revenue.
We received two additional ones this month, or actually in October, excuse me, that were on anticipated sales of Medicaid receipts and then homeless transportation. So, that is reflected on this report. Additionally, Mike's not here, but I'm sure that he's very happy that the triple E grant has been approved for the gate receipts, the athletics. But really, in looking at last year, it did not impact them as much as you might have thought it would be. And they have two great games, or had one, and one coming up, football game this month. So, we are hoping that he stays on track.
So, if there are no questions, next in the packet is the FY '21 budget priorities, which we voted on at the last meeting after your review. And the FY '21 budget calendar, and we've been working on the FY '20 budget with the leadership team and principals. So, we actually have a meeting there, actually tomorrow, to review the preliminary budget. And we have an operational budget subcommittee meeting scheduled for December 10th, 2019.
So, next is old business, which there's none at this time. There's no policy development or distribution. We did audience sharing. And the next is personnel.
No major changes in the personnel report at this time?
So, there's a copy of the harbinger, and a revised distribution of the revised department presentation schedule for the rest of the year. For those, if everyone can help sign the payroll before you leave. And for next month, our agenda items is the English department presentation. Is there anything else that we want to...
So, we also, we had planned on having the technology presentation, the one-on-one update, which unfortunately, we weren't able to have at this meeting. So, my recommendation is to have Brian Callen come in December.
Okay. Is there anything else that you guys want to put on? So, we're going to enter executive session after the, oh, Ben?
I was just thinking in terms of whether it's next month or another time. Maybe in terms of school climate, the vocal data, it's a survey they give to all the students who take MCAS, and it'd be interesting to see their thoughts and as to what the climate and culture of the school is.
Okay. What is that, katakod?
Vocal. It's an acronym for something.
Yes, I mean, Paul?
I'll move that we move to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. Given the chair's determination of the discussion regarding this matter in open meetings, they have detrimental effects on the position, the committee has no intent to reach an open meeting.
All right, so, first, Paul. Second, Dan. Do we go? All right, so, I need a roll call, so everyone...
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Okay. Thanks, everyone.